Well, good afternoon. Today is October 20th, 25. This is the 6:00 PM version of the Rowan County Board of Commissioners. Thank you for being here tonight. We're glad that you're here with us, here personally and for the thousands that are watching us on television tonight. We appreciate you joining us and we hope you enjoy your time with us tonight. We begin our meetings as always. Got a couple of things that we'll do. We're gonna have our chaplain will come forward, Chaplain Taylor. We always appreciate him being here. He's gonna provide for us what is called a solemnizing prayer. I always define that solemnizing prayer is he's gonna come and pray for wisdom for us. It's a prayer for us, it's not for you. You're welcome to listen in if you like because we value wisdom and we honestly trying to do what's in the best interest of the good people of Rowan County. So, he's gonna come forward and do that and following that, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioners, if you'll join me, we'll get started.
Commissioners, let's pray. Father, we come to you tonight with the honor and privilege to pray for county commissioners, dear Lord. We thank you for them and we thank you for them in attendance today and we thank for everything they've done to prepare for this meeting tonight. We thank you for them loving Rowan County, urban Rowan County, Lord. For your blessing of that, please be with us tonight in this meeting and the days ahead in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
...................................................................................................
Well, good evening. I've got a couple of additions to our agenda. Got an item change order number seven for CAMD construction. We're gonna add that as consent item Z as in zebra. Also, Contract 26236 for, I don't even know, neurogile leadership? Neurogile leadership? That'll be item AA on consent as well. Anyone have any other additions or deletions for us? I think, yep, that was next. Thank you. And then, we're gonna remove from consent, item consent item X, and we will add that. That's for, Craig, that's for you, isn't it? Where would you like that? At the very end after everyone? No? Oh, you gotta be here anyway? Okay. Well, then, let's add that right after the financial report and we'll make that item eight, okay? All right, any other changes? All right, hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
No move.
Second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And then, let's see here. Motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
No move.
Second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Let's see, then we'll move on to public comment. We've got Mark Ortiz. Thank you for being here. Glad to see you. Welcome.
I come in through well, yes?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Appreciate the opportunity and I am here on behalf of Townhome, North Carolina. I believe you folks have gotten some familiarity with us as an organization. We are having a listening session next month on the 18th. That's Tuesday. I believe it's right after your regular meeting of in November. And a listening session is where we hear from the community at large about what issues and concerns they have, what ideas they have to improve Rowan County and help people out in whatever way here. It's at the Park Avenue Community Center here in Salisbury. It's at 6:00 PM on Tuesday, November 18th. We feed you. We have childcare. Elected officials, it's a great idea to come and make contact directly with the electorate and hear what they have to say and what their concerns are, especially if you're running for office next year, but in any case. So, we, you are invited, anybody listening, anybody present here, you're all invited. There's no charge for anything and everybody's welcome. I have here a little flower for it and I will let you pass this around.
Yeah, sure.
And I, we just got a few of these printed up. I've only got two of them, but it has a QR code on the back and you can scan that with your phone if you're interested. It will take you to a page where you can RSVP for the event. We also have another event coming up in China Grove this week, two days from now, at the Main Street Meeting Place, 306 South Main in China Grove. We call that Work Talk. And this is a discussion group where we discuss any and all things relating to the world of work. And we welcome people to that as well. And that's 6:00 at 306 South Main in China Grove. And if anybody's interested in more information, you can contact me, Mark Ortiz, 704-798-9612. Thank you.
What I heard is that you'll feed us. Oh, I think I'm in. All right. All right, thank you. All right, we'll move, move on to our active agenda, item Z 11-24. Aaron, welcome back.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hold up here. All right, we have Z 1124, a request from RA to CBI CD for conditional district for the placement of a automotive towing with storage facility. This was originally brought to y'all on the August 18th meeting. At the time, we had a public hearing, we heard the report, and then the discussion was tabled for the September meeting. Then at the September meeting, it was further tabled to today. So, just kind of a recap, the applicant is seeking to rezone the prop, about seven acres of their property off of 1124 Majolica Road for the automotive towing with storage that would meet the criteria on this site plan here. And then, currently, we've had the public hearing, we've closed the public hearing and at this time, it, we would need to deliberate, adopt statements and then approve or deny the request. If you have any questions on what's being presented or what's been presented, I'm here for anything. Otherwise, it'd be move on into deliberations.
As I recall, we're still in session on this.
Right.
So, we're just deliberating in this meeting.
Right. If you wanted to have public comment, you could reopen public comment or reopen the public hearing, but as of now, it is closed.
Well, then, we are open for deliberation. Any comments on this?
Well, obviously, I think, I mentioned I was trying to catch up on this issue and how it was going when it started. I guess it's been going on for a while. And so, after, I guess we've had it twice, maybe on the agenda or at least once, and reading through the information that I received, that we all received from the attorneys and conversations they've had, and the things I've heard, which I think are some information that's probably my understanding was after planning board it was able to receive, it does seem to me at this point, it would be spot zoning. And so, obviously, I couldn't support spot zoning, but my concern is, you know, having enough time for this gentleman, you know, to figure out what he can do with his property and not close him down immediately and give him time to figure out what he wants to do or where he can go if he needs to do something different with his property. But I don't know where the rest of the board is, but that was my comment is that, you know, if we end up not approving this, we need to give him time to make the adjustments he needs for. But I know he has employees and I don't want his employees not to have work and do what he's doing.
So, this one had, this has, obviously, if we've put it off a couple of times for additional information, we've used our attorney and assistant attorney an awful lot. One of the issues that comes before us is really a basis of kind of, kind of a decision. Spot zoning is the not-spot zoning. Seems to be some ambiguity from a legal standpoint. And what we mean by that is typically, spot zoning, among other things, partly defined by property that is owned by a single person. So, in a narrow definition sense, if it's owned by husband and wife, then there's been some narrow definition of then that could not be spot zoning. But for everything else, seems to be husband and wife married, tend to look at those folks as the same person. So, we bring ourselves then to that and believe that the best decision in this case set is that it would be considered spot zoning. So, in our citizenry, spot zoning, not spot zoning. Once it goes to spot zoning, then we have to look at the requirements the state has on then, if you're gonna consider it spot zoning and you're gonna change, change the zoning, free to do spot zoning, it has to meet certain criteria. So, I wanna discuss those so that you understand at least where I'm coming from and perhaps others. Once it's determined to be spot zoning, it must be determined as reasonable based on a number of factors that are included in the general statute 160D-605. One, the size, physical condition and other attributes of the area proposed to be rezoned. You have to consider that in general, the smaller the lot, the more likely rezoning would be invalid. Size of the lot could be contextualized by development in the vicinity. What is considered large in an urban setting may be considered small in a rural setting. Spot zonings are generally considered reasonable when they fit into an existing land use plan. Tends to not fit in this land use plan. Through the benefits and detriments to landowners, neighbors and surrounding communities, spot zoning that is beneficial to the community may be considered reasonable. Benefits should be substantial for the surrounding community and not just generally beneficial. So, the way we interpret that is if you have a convenience store or, you know, if you're out in the county and you're surrounded by farms, but you have a, let's say, a farm store there that's providing farm supplies, that would serve that community, but it, but the benefits must be substantial and not just generally beneficial. Free the relationship between the current actual and permissible development on the tract and adjoining areas in the development that would be permissible in the proposed amendment. Spot zoning may be considered reasonable when the allowed uses in the new zoning district are not radically different from the current allowed uses. Conditions require a conditional district rezoning that mitigate harm to neighbors may be used as justification for the rezoning. Fourth, we have to explain why the action taken is in the public interest of everybody, not just that group or individuals seeking the spot zoning. And lastly, any change conditions that are warranting the amendment, so significant changes in, in an area such as an expansion of infrastructure may be used as justification. So, you know, I think we've all struggled over this because we've got, we've got competing reasons for wanting to approve this and wanting not to approve it and approve it. And believe me, we, we understand both of them and there's no one on this board that is not a huge fan and committed to the, the very real and necessary issue of private property rights. But over the years that we've been here, while we are champions of that, we also have to consider private property rights of other folks. Where private property rights end for some folks, begins with others or vice versa. An issue I've had in this is, you know, when you look at the original business that was on this lot, and I think I may have this right, if you can refresh our memory, but I think we had a home-based business where we had a sheet metal shop, like sheet metal or something.
Uh, it was metal fabrication stuff. Metal fabrication, so pretty similar.
Yeah. And then, those folks sold and we went to a diesel mechanic facility and at some point, other buildings were built that were not permitted.
It was the addition to the building out.
And then, I don't know if there are, but, but we find, all right, here we are now. And so, I kinda described this in my mind as kind of mission creep, right? We began as a home-based business and now we've worked our way down the road to where we are, certainly a viable business, may not be in the right spot, good business, but now we're considering 250 vehicles. And so, my, so my question then becomes, is the neighborhood and is the county or constituents, are we committed then to approving everything from here on out? Because it started with this in that location. If this business gets sold, let's say these folks retire, enjoy life and they sell the business off, what comes next? So, for these reasons, I, I will not be able to support the rezoning. So, I'm with Mike. I think we need to work with petitioner to figure out what, what we want to do. We work with the planning department and try to come up with something reasonable for them to be able to comply as necessary. And that would include working with these folks to really define what is, let's, let's figure out what's reasonable and we wanna be good neighbors. All ahead.
Yeah. When you look back at how it was permitted to begin with and then this individual bought it and has used it for a year and a half or whatever he's been out there without getting zoning on the thing. Now, we're brought into it after he's got a going business. It, it just is really tough on us to, we have to make decisions by state law. Don't think that it is an interpretation of ours when we look at spot zoning. Pretty well set out for it, but, Chairman, bad as it bothers me, I don't think I'll be able to change the zoning.
Anything else?
Mr. Chairman, if I, we looked at every option across this county, people have done the same thing, we'd fill this place up a week. I cannot in good conscience deny this wish. I will be voting, yes, I may be voting by myself, but I in good conscience cannot turn this gentleman down for doing what is done all across this county.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right, any other discussion? All right, then, do we have a motion to approve Z 11-24?
No move.
All right, do we have a second? All right, so it fails for lack of a second, but we will need to provide a statement of reasonableness and consistency for denying Z 11-24. I'll offer that up. I'll need to read this into the record. The board considered the planning board recommendation, however, for the following reasons denies the petition. The board recognizes that the question of whether property owned jointly by a husband and wife is property owned by a single person for purposes of the spot zoning definition. It is an open legal question in North Carolina law. Board agrees with the position articulated by Judge Dillon in his dissent to the 2015 Court of Appeals case, Good Neighbors of Oregon Hill versus County Brockingham, that property owned jointly by a husband and wife is single owner property as it relates to spot zoning definition. Currently, because this property is relatively small tract owned by a single person, surrounded by a much larger area uniformly zoned residential, relieving this property from restrictions placed on the surrounding property, requested rezone would be spot zoning. As this requested rezone would be spot zoning, we must apply the reasonable basis test factors set out on the Court of Appeals case Etheridge versus County of Curata. For the first factor, size of the tract in question, it weighs against granting this petition as the portion of the tract to be rezoned is relatively small at only seven acres. For the second factor, the compatibility of the disputed zoning action with an existing comprehensive plan, it weighs against granting this position. Petition, as the Western Area Land Use Plan encourages medium density residential development in this area and identifies US 29 and US 70 as appropriate corridors for heavy impact uses, which this is not located in. This proposed rezone is not compatible with the Western Area Land Use Plan. As for the third factor, the benefits and detriments test, it weighs against granting this petition because there is no evidence this rezone would increase neighboring property values. There is no showing of broad-based support for this rezone as to the only public comments have been in opposition to the petition and there is no evidence the surrounding landowners, landowners will use the expanded services allowed by this proposed rezone. Lastly, the fourth factor, the relationship between the proposed uses and the uses on adjoining tracks also weighs against granting the petition as all adjoining property is either residential or rural agricultural and commercial property is very limited in the larger surrounding area. As such, all four factors of the reasonable basis test weigh against granting this petition and it is denied as a result. Take that in the form of a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
All right, then, do we have, you wanna direct BJ and planning department just to work with these folks?
I don't know what, what would be better than a time limit or just? You know, I mean, I think it would take months and months for this to happen. You've gotta move your business. More functional for the county for us to say, you know, 12 months, 18 months? Or is it just leave it open to working with the planning department?
Would it be better just for us to meet and talk about compliance period and then come back and address it with the board? Yeah, we'll, we'll talk to them and work with them. We'll come back with an update.
All right, then, I guess we would, we don't need to do anything else then, do we?
Yeah, so now, motion to deny the rezoning.
Okay. All right, do we, do we have a motion to deny Z 11-24?
No move.
Second? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. All right, Shane, legislative hearing for Z 07-25, Sifford Rental Property LLC.
All right, so this request here is pertaining to the Sifford Rental Properties LLC on tracks. There's four of them. Tax parcels 388, 064, 6591 and 93, located at the 6100 block of East NC 152 Highway. Look at the map here before you, you'll see the subject, three acre collective parcels are outlined in blue off the south side of 152 near the intersection of Faith and Oregon Church Road. On a zoom in of the site here, you see the area outlined in blue still and then the interior collectively four tax parcels. So, this sort of a cream colored area, yellow is rural agricultural, the current zoning, the request would be to CBI in red. You do see the track borders, the CBI on the north and west side. This is a straight rezoning. There's no plan specific for the operation. It does have a history of being used for parking and storage of commercial trailer. In a most recent photo from earlier this year, I'll take you on a little quick tour starting around 11:00. You have a mini storage facility up here, zone CBI approved as such in 2008 as a green site, developed after that. And then, the Sifford's Exxon gas station auto repair here, Sifford's wholesale and fuel bulk, bulk storage, both of those own CBI. This has some history too. It's an RA zone property that we've currently predated zoning and then was a home occupation for landscape material, storage, sales and also prefab building sales. In 19, the Dollar General property was rezoned, CBI CD here. This is zone commercial as well, that it's a multi-tenant building for a personal service slash retail. And then, the, one of the dominant land uses is the Rockwell Farms over here, 220 acres, a little bit shy of 2 million square foot under roof with the greenhouse. When we compare the When we compare the two districts, anything you see in the RA district that's non-residential is going to be your home occupation. So we know what the CBI district's pretty open, but again, it does border existing zones of the same on the north and east side. When we look at the land use plan, we're in area three, low density residential, but more importantly, within the highway one fifty-two corridor and also the community node for ironically Sifford. So a lot of Siffords in the area, a lot of history, some of those businesses I mentioned have been there since, I believe, six. For his public notice, letters go out to adjoining property owners, which totaled five posted sign on the site, letter in, or add in the Salisbury Post. Deb did not receive any phone calls or emails from certain citizens. Planning Board unanimously recommended approval and offered this statement for the Board's consideration. After hearing, the owner is here if you have any questions, but otherwise I don't think he had anything to share. But after the public hearing, consider these, the Board recommendation, your statement, and then a motion to consider the request. Any question?
All right, thank you, Shane. Would the owner like to speak? You're welcome to, don't have to. All right, we'll open the floor for public comment. Now's the time, if you have anything to say about this issue, then this would be a good time to speak. Seeing none, we'll close the public commentary. And would someone like to offer a statement of reasonableness, Mike?
Move that Z zero seven two five is consistent with the East Area Land Use Plan and reasonable, appropriate based on the following. One, the plan encourages highway businesses along the NC one fifty-two highway corridor. Two, the property, property request directly joins other parcels with the like zone use and appears to be logical extension of the zone.
Do we have a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Do we have a motion to approve Z oh seven dash two five?
No move.
Aye.
Second, any other discussion? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Shane, you're back.
One more from, from Bowtie Properties LLC. It's one parcel, tax parcel four oh six oh ninety-seven located at the one hundred block of Porter Road. And Porter Road is a small dead end frontage road off of Peach Orchard Road here on the northeast quadrant of eighty-five and interchange there with Peach Orchard Road. This site or parcel is two and three quarters acres. See the light blue color, it's currently zone eighty-five ED two. And the requested zoning designation would be CBI. This one would have a conditional use district with a site plan that we'll look at shortly. So to go back, not go into too much history, but that tract and this zoned area is about a hundred acre ED two, identified zone back early two thousand. The county developed a sweet freeway business park in two thousand and five on two thirds of that acreage. And then this tract here in the oils property totaled about thirty acres was identified as a potential ED site, had better access here than this location here near the intersection. But really, if you're going to develop this independent from the other, the CBI district's going to give you a lot more flexibility than trying to develop just on that small tract. So the benefit too in this request, it does have a conditional district. While CBI is very open, this site specific plan will ensure the Board can focus on a specific proposal. So Bowtie Properties in this request submits the site plan for consideration. Proposed twenty thousand six hundred square foot building. And the use would be, the structure would house automobiles and different memorabilia from the owner. And in that, it could be used as a facility that will repair those vehicles, sell them. But ultimately, there's an interest in having a museum where it could be a ticketed event where folks could pay money to come in and see the contents in the building and also have different private events there to be hosted. So that's the overall, each use could be included in this request. Kind of skipped over this, but just to orient you, there's Porter Road here. Proposed driveway connection, like all indications from DOT that this satisfies their standards. It meets fire code with access on three sides. As you're parking on the front of the building and side. Front portion has been evaluated by a private soil scientist and it appears sufficient for the primary and backup septic field. Form water management in the back required by the state. It'll have a type A buffer on the both sides for the property to comply with the ordinance. So again, site plan and this is identified in your packet as Exhibit A, the description of the building. In this pictometry image, here's Porter Road. Leads down to church here off the site and then freeway business park here. Stafford Estates, Orchard Hills, and the Dillars Distribution. The ED two zones are pretty narrow district. It focuses on some construction, but mainly manufacturing, wholesale trade, transportation, warehousing, et cetera, uses. And of course, this is going to be very narrowly tailored to those specific uses identified. When we look at the east plan, we're within this box here, we're in the purple area, existing commercial industrial. And we're also within the eighty-five quarter, so the request would comply there. Same number of notices as last time, five property owners received notice. There was one, one phone call we received and that was dealing with addressing, had nothing to do with the operation. So nobody's expressed concern with this site. Should point out too, Mr. Hank Niblock is here representing the applicant. So he'll probably share a brief overview and provide any kind of answers to questions you may have. The Planning Board recommended unanimously nine oh to approve. They offered this statement for consideration. No conditions were associated with the project. And after hearing from the applicant, hearing, consider these two motions. Any question?
Shane, applicant here would like to speak.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Shane said, I'm Hank Niblock with Craig Jenkins, Sifford Walker, attorney of Longwoods in Salem. Appreciate being here tonight in front of you. Substantively, as my past dealings with Shane does a great job of explaining all the details, me and Mr. Eller who's the Bowtie Properties here. If there be any questions, thank you all. Allow us to be here.
All right, we'll open up the floor for public comment, public hearing. Anyone like to speak about this zoning change? Anyone? Anyone? All right, we'll close public hearing. Commissioners, we have. On page six, oh, looky there. Like magic. All right, I'll offer a statement of reasonableness and consistency. Z oh eight dash two five is consistent with the East Area Land Use Plan and reasonable and appropriate based on the following. One, the property is an existing commercial and industrial area. Two, the proposal is compliant with NC DOT standards. And three, there will be no impact on existing utilities. Offer that in the form of a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Do we have a motion to approve Z zero eight dash two five?
No move.
Second.
Thank you, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. You're welcome. Scott? Thanks, Shane. Scott Shelton shows up, usually going to be a good day.
I appreciate that, I'll try my best, but I'm really surprised the Board, when I saw the agenda and saw three zoning permit cases on the agenda, I thought I'd be here till like eight o'clock tonight, so kudos to you guys for going through.
We're getting, getting better.
Okay.
Only took eleven years.
Well, thank you for hearing this request tonight from the EDC on behalf of Project Vitamin. So Project Vitamin is an existing employer in Rowan County in the medical field. More specifically, they provide mental health at home healthcare services to their customers and their patients across North Carolina with an office here in Salisbury. They've been around for about, I think, five years now. They also provide outpatient therapy, offer specialized programs such as substance abuse and mental health counseling. The company also trains counselors and peer support providers to provide services declines on behalf of the company. Right now, they have about sixty people employed in Rowan County with another fifteen in other locations within the state of North Carolina. So the company's planning a significant expansion. They purchased a site in Rowan County for this new facility. And they plan to invest about ten and a half million in the new facility. And over the next five years, create a little over five hundred jobs. And their hope is to start their operations in the new facility in early twenty twenty-seven. So in regards to incentives, we're working with the company right now to apply to the state of North Carolina for what's called a rural healthcare grant. This is in the same area of, he's building reuse grants that the Board has applied for in the past on behalf of companies. Those are typically for renovation of buildings, but the state makes an exception in this case for new construction for things in the healthcare industry. So what we're hoping to do is apply for a half million dollar grant, that's the max you can apply for, help them offset construction costs for this new facility. Again, just like the building reuse grants, the county would have to apply for this grant on behalf of the company. This grant also requires a five percent local match. In this case, if they were to get the full amount, that'd be twenty-five thousand dollars. But what the EDC's requesting in addition to county applying for this grant is that county utilizes economic development funds by this twenty-five thousand dollar local match to the company. Could be used for trade specific equipment or fixtures or building outfits. The Board has done grants like this in the past, there was one done for Chewy. And there's also one done for New York Air Break, it's been a few years ago, but there is some precedent there for the Board doing this. And.
This comes out of that revenue.
Right, I think it's economic development and education, I believe. I can't think of the exact tax, but that is the case. But this, this would be a grant structured as a forgivable loan, again, you've done this before. The loan would be forgiven if all the job creation goals are met, in this case, five hundred and one jobs. I think there'd be a portion forgiven each year till the final job that the county made. If that job goal's not met, somebody would be required to repay the loan on a percentage basis based on the jobs not created. And then of course, the application itself and the administration would be handled through the county's grant administration department. So there wasn't really much to estimate in this case, we don't have like a tax incentive. This would be the only incentive the company's asking for, there wouldn't be a tax grant like the Board typically awards these type of projects. Again, twenty-five thousand dollars. I did want to try to provide the estimated revenue to the county for this project. And there's some numbers there in your packet and it was based on the usual information, the estimated investment in real and personal property, the current tax rate of fifty-eight cent. You'll notice there was only two hundred thousand dollars in business personal property, this is basically office furniture. No high tech equipment here, it's mainly the buildings, it's going to be the majority of the investment in this project. And we did, even though it was two hundred thousand, we did factor in business depreciation or business property depreciation using the state's depreciation schedule with ten year lifespans assumed. Take those factors into account, the county is looking at about five hundred and eighty thousand dollars over ten years, this project. We also tried to look at the additional impacts of the project, what we call indirect and induced jobs. An indirect job, of course, is when jobs are created by companies supplying products and services to the new business. And induced jobs are when those jobs, the people behind those jobs take their money and spend it in the community on things like meals at restaurants, clothing, things like that. So we use a software projection through Jobs EQ, which is a modeling service we use frequently. And they project a hundred and twenty-two indirect and induced jobs created as a result of this project. And those one hundred and twenty-two jobs create about eight million dollars of wages and benefits for those new jobs for these employees. And also about twenty-five million in gross revenue for the companies creating these one hundred and twenty-two indirect induced jobs. So again, in closing, about two and a half million, I'm sorry, ten and a half million of new investment in the county. Five hundred and one new jobs, about five hundred and eighty thousand of additional property tax revenue to the county over ten years. One hundred and twenty-two indirect and induced jobs. And as always, we always like to point out, we're trying to support an existing Rowan County employer with this incentive request. So after the public hearing, if the Board is so inclined, what we'd ask is to approve the middle of this building reuse grant, five hundred thousand dollars on behalf of the company. And also to award the twenty-five thousand dollar grant to Project Vitamin using economic development fund. That's all I have, happy to answer any questions.
Know anything about?
Yes, sir, we've been told the average pay is sixty-four thousand eight hundred and forty-eight dollars. And the median is about fifty-four thousand. But your lowest paying jobs are around forty-five thousand, your top one is around a hundred and fifty thousand. But the majority of the positions created would be what they classified as peer support specialists and also, I guess, certified counselors. And then there would be about forty case managers as well, but all those would be in the mid, anywhere from fifty-four to eighty-four thousand dollars. So some really good paying jobs.
Are they expanding on their current site or are they moving?
No, they, they are currently leasing some space in Salisbury, they're purchasing land to build this new facility. It would be, I think, in total about thirty thousand square feet of a four story building. I think the bottom two floors, or sorry, bottom three floors would be for treatment offices and corporate office functions. Then the fourth floor would be a meeting. They have already purchased the land.
Be our new tallest building? Rockland County?
It'll be up there.
All right, thanks Scott, don't go far. We'll open the hearing if anyone is here that would like to give your opinion on this twenty-five thousand dollar grant. This is a wonderful opportunity for this company, also for Rowan County. Typically are involved in incentive conversations, but in this, in this case, we need to do that, five hundred and one job. Know that we are providing the assistance for, to apply for the grant. We thought initially that that assistance would count toward our twenty-five thousand, but that grant, specifically on that grant, said it had to be actual money that we put out. The match, the matching.
Yes, sir, in the past, when we've applied for these grants, the county would sometimes contract out the grant administration service and that could count toward the local match. In my conversation with Commerce, they said since you do it in-house, that's why they own staff to do that, it wouldn't satisfy the match. So that's why we had to do this cash requirement.
I have one question, I must have dozed off. This five hundred new jobs for this, total of what they're doing now, plus something to make up two five hundred.
This would be five hundred and one new jobs in addition to the employees they already have. Over a five year span.
All right, anyone else have any question? Oh yeah, come on forward.
One thing I'd like to say is, I, I agree with what they proposing, and it's wonderful to get those jobs to come here to the county. But how many of them's gonna go to county people? We gonna hire people outside the county to fill those jobs or? I mean, I, just for example, I had two grandkids in the last two weeks that applied to a local company down, down the interstate that is hiring, and my grandkids couldn't get a job. They had to go to Stanley County and to Cabarrus County to find a job. One night you wasn't here, Mr. Chairman, and I talked about that when we have new business come in, that we need to have something there that states that, that so many of those jobs go to our people here in the county. When our kids are graduating high school, where they gonna go to work? And that, that was my thing. If we gonna have these jobs, we oughta have some of them for Rowan County. Like I say, I, I agree, and I'm looking forward to seeing new jobs come, but the jobs are coming for people in Rowan County. We don't wanna bring in new jobs and hire everybody from Cabarrus and Ireal and Stanley County and places like that. I'm not saying you can't. I'm just saying we need to allot some of those jobs for the people here in Rowan County. Thank you for listening.
Think my response with that, for that would be every single one of those jobs are for Rowan County residents. Every, every one of the five hundred and one jobs. Now, responsibility, right? It's a, an agreement between labor and the employer. So, the labor has to show up and apply. So, I was, and, and so what is the community doing? All the EDC and the Chamber of Commerce, we just got done with the job fair. We had thousands turn out for a job fair just a few months ago. Someone, I don't know if someone in this, someone told me today, who was it? I, I had lunch today with a developer and with a couple other folks from a Rowan County town, and they said their child went to the recent job fair, wasn't it just last week, Carla? Three weeks ago, and got hired on the spot by no bond. So, the, these jobs, will all of the people that work there be from Rowan County? Probably not. But it's our responsibility as chamber, as EDC, as elected, making these jobs available, and folks have to apply. Do, do we have the ability to require that they only be, I don't think, hey, that's not legal. Can't do that. So, these are exciting times, and so why are we doing all of this? We're doing this because we had, we got these folks that are stuck in these, you know, two and three jobs with no benefits, no vacation, no health insurance, no retirement. And, and this is a boon for Rowan County now. And it's, it's really tailor-made for the folks that are looking for hope and opportunity, the ability to build generational wealth. And so, we've got thousand-plus jobs coming for Macy's now and another five hundred here. We're probably gonna make another announcement pretty soon on something out Highway seventy, maybe. But everyone in Rowan County that wants a job, man, they are there and they're not eight-dollar-an-hour job. E, e- every job I hear come before us is in this mid-sixty, on average, so...
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to add, in addition to those jobs, just the twelve hundred that Jabel will be hiring, but specifically to this project here, again, we can't guarantee that it'll be filled by Rowan County employees, but one thing that may help is a sizable number of these new jobs are gonna be counselors. It's our understanding they'll be providing training for these counselors. And an opportunity to maybe have somebody in Rowan County fill that position. There's gonna be over a hundred of those positions that will be trained there at that site.
And it's also interesting, as these companies come and meet with us, they go out and they, they talk with folks around the county, and one of the major stops they make is at Rowan Cabarrus Community College. And they spend a half a day or longer with the officials at Rowan Cabarrus Community College. And why are they there? Because they say, all right, here's what our company is, here's what we do, we're gonna need good-trained workforce. And so, Rowan Cabarrus works hand-in-hand with the employer to create specific customized training for them. So, folks that live in Rowan County then can walk straight out of that training and walk right into these jobs. So, it, this really is a great opportunity. I don't know if you heard what Scott said, I, you know, I said a thousand-plus at Macy's, and they're still hiring now. We had their grand opening last week. But he mentioned, said a little fast, but Jabel was a Saint Pete company, and they're moving up here. And that's twelve hundred jobs there, and those are great jobs. So, we're trying to get the word out. If you want a job in Rowan County, boy, opportunity has never been better, and that's really exciting. Anyone else have any questions? Thank you for your comment, because you raise a, raise a really good question. All right, then we'll close the public hearing, and commissioners, do we have a motion to approve? The incentive, oh, you got something?
Yeah, the, I guess these are considered, these can be considered white-collar jobs, ain't they?
For the most part, yes. One thing I neglected to mention was, this grant we're applying for, the actual, I guess, award date for this would be December fourth. We would know, assuming everything goes okay, we would know then about it, and the state would likely announce it at that time.
I just wanted to say that, you know, five hundred and one jobs, that's a significant number. I think we've been blessed the last few years where we've had all of these big announcements. I remember a time when a hundred jobs, like, wow, incredible. A hundred jobs, thousands of jobs, and five hundred and one jobs. And so, I think that, you know, we're just really blessed right now in our county. You know, sometimes, you know, it's sort of, no matter what happens, you know, there's always critics and everything. Some of the big announcements that these are jobs, they're more laboring, or blue-collar type jobs. And, you know, someone who worked in a mill for several years, went to school and was able to go to IT and then moved there to law enforcement, you know, I know there, you need to have options and places to go. And, you know, to your point earlier, you know, these are opportunities now that we have here that we haven't had before. You know, we have some big jobs where you're gonna go and work in maybe a distribution place, but now we've got these jobs coming here that are more white-collar type jobs, I guess, could explain them. So, I like that we're having a more diverse kind of jobs coming to our camp, expanding what we've got here. And so, I'm just, I just feel blessed. I mean, this five hundred and one jobs would be the biggest thing ever for us ten years ago. But now, it's just what we're doing, and it, and I'm just...
How do you remember years ago, Inter, Intercon, they're still with it?
They are, Intercon Furniture.
That was the first deal we did, isn't it? Remember how many jobs that was?
It was actually, if I recall, around ten. They were leasing that, it was that trucking terminal.
Jim Green and I were with you guys walking through that warehouse in Spencer, and we were handing out bottles of cheer wine. They were from Salt Lake City, Utah. We were, we were giving them cheer wine. Every time folks came into Rowan County, we were handing out cheer wine. And this is who we are, right? And we, we were over the moon, Jim. Remember? We were over the moon when they said they were coming here, and we had ten folks, and we thought, man, look what's...
We've been striking out. Couldn't give land.
Yeah, we, we couldn't give it away.
And I don't wanna diminish what they've done. We appreciate every...
No, 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 we, we don't. They, they were our first, and, and the fact that I can remember, are very further, some I'd, I'd think on, but Intercon meant a lot, and I think they've even expanded.
Yeah, and I believe the gentleman that owns it has also bought some land out in Performance Technology Park where Toyota Racing Development is.
Oh, what a, what a ride. We went ten to now thousand.
Yeah, it's really, a lot of it's a reflection too of just what we've been saying for years, our strategic location. These companies do their labor studies, and I know everybody's looking for people everywhere, but we consistently score high because of our proximity to Charlotte, to the Triad, and also to Statesville and to Hickory. So, that's why these numbers keep getting bigger, and I think they'll continue to stay that way. As long as we have product and we have the labor force, we'll be in competition for these projects.
All right, well, thank you. All right, do we have a motion to approve this incentive grant?
I move.
Second?
Second.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Scott, thank you. Get back to work. All right, consider approval of Rowan County Flag Program Policy. Mike, you wanna talk about this? No, you want? Oh, okay. Well, I saw you were on here, but I don't know if, or sector of the board has presented a...
Feels weird to be on this side.
Yeah, good.
So, this request came about from Commissioner Cast, and it is modeled after what they do at the Capitol. This policy kind of details a standard operating procedure, what we can expect price-wise, the way that the process will work, and then I've got... So, the whole purpose of this program is to be able to have flags flown over this building that we can then present to citizens for ceremonial or memorial purposes. Each commissioner would be allowed to have fifteen flags per year to, you know, give to citizens their own or whatever. Citizens will also be able to make requests on the county website for a flag. Once a request is made, either by a commissioner or by a citizen, the flag will be flown off of this balcony. We'll have a flagpole out there, it'll be flown for one business day, and then we'll bring it down, we'll package it up, get it to the citizen, and they will have their own official Rowan County flag. Any citizen or organization in the county eligible, they will have one day of display for each request unless they ask for more, and then we'll ask an additional flying. You'll see here in the policy where it talks about each commissioner will receive fifteen flags per fiscal year. And again, these are yours to do whatever kind of ceremonial purpose. We will know in advance, need them, so that we can get them flown, and we can get this sort of bit of authenticity or whatever given to the person that corresponds with the fly date. We're gonna ask that requests be submitted at least two weeks in advance, give me a chance to actually get them out on the flagpole and fly them. We have an online submission form that April Everett's been working on that includes all of the contact information, what date they want it flown, the reason for flying, how the name is gonna look on the certificate. And that information will come to me, I'll create the certificate for them, once it's been flown, they get the flag and the certificate. We will require payment from citizens that request a flag. Right now, we're looking at thirty-eight dollars per flag, and that takes into consideration the actual flag itself, case for the flag, and then the supplies for the certificate. We'll have those in our little... So, we're obviously gonna follow flag, to the best of our ability. Everything will be flown with proper orientation, not gonna touch the ground. We will provide this certificate of authenticity. I will work directly with the citizens or commissioners if you're the one flying the flag to the citizen. I'll work for the citizens, I'll work with you to pick up, get the pickup date finalized, whether we're doing a presentation from here, whether you're... And we will keep record of these in our office. The only exceptions would be if there's unsafe or inclement weather conditions. We will not fly after hours or over weekends. It'll only be days that the county office building operates on a regular schedule. So, I'm gonna show you these two things.
Can I ask a question? Is this an award that has to be voted on by the commission?
This policy would be voted on. Not the individual.
Anybody for any reason?
So, to give you a comparison, the Capitol receives like a hundred thousand flag requests per year. They have dedicated staff to do that. In our case, I am the dedicated staff. We don't anticipate a hundred thousand requests, but it would be for any citizen that wants to put in the, the request board and pay. This is a sample that actually takes the day of what the flag... This one's from... Some of our older flags. This is essentially what the flag would be, and for display purposes. We've got little plastic display cases. If there's any particular desire on how the flag should be folded, I can get, we can work that out, because it's kind of a bit of a, an odd flag, so, but it could be the case that it's prevented in. We've given our blue jacket certificate. Happy to answer any of your questions.
Oh, yeah, this is actually, I don't even know how many months ago, I wasn't even here, but I'd gone up there and, you know, we had, when I was overseas, they flew flags over our talk. Wanted one for somebody, you would go buy it, they would fly it for a day, and so we kind of mimic some of that, and then, you know, we always see the state representatives or congresspeople, they have flags. And I thought, you know, that'd be something that, that we could do for our citizens. I know we give out coins a lot, but it's something a little different, and it's something, you know, we talked about it, and obviously, this, any of this is whatever we wanna make of it. You know, whether or not we wanted to have us vote on it at any time, but then, you know, if we're open it to citizens, to get a flag, then they should be able to get a flag and not have to wait. They have a birthday or something, they wanna give a flag to. And then we have things, we have people that we bring up here sometimes and do proclamation for, or we get invited to go speak places. I know, been a lot of times that we've go see, you know, older veterans, and I like, I like to have them, give them a little coin, but I think the flag's more, I like the flag better than... I think Ripson County probably better than the coin. Coins get lost, flags are probably gonna sit up. That was just the, the thought behind it, and obviously, you said any, this is kind of what we come up with, but I'm open to any...
Just for the public, Mike's the idea guy, always has been. I, I love this idea. So, I'm, I'm, never thought of it. Mike just, why don't we do this? Anything else? Mike, would you like to make a motion?
Yeah, well, there's one thing that I guess you had brought up. Sometimes, there's, uh, times when we need him to do, do flag. We may need him to do flags for us, but we're not available, so maybe, uh, have him, if you add him to the list of fifteen per year, and tell him, say, I need one for this business to come to town. I will make a motion that we approve this.
Second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All right, thanks, Mike. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Well done. All right, I have some board appointments. Let me go through these, and we'll make one motion. Granite Quarry Planning Board, Tamara Hun, uh, Tamara Hunsecker Alston, applied for an ETJ seat for Granite Quarry Planning Board. Also, has applied for an ETJ seat on the Granite Quarry Zoning Board. Liberty Volunteer Fire Department Board of Trustees, Dale Steven Shepherd, applied for the county seat on the Liberty Volunteer Fire Department Board. And Planning Board, Tyler, how you pronounce his last name? Wythorn? Weethorn? Weethorn? None of us know. Yeah, for reappointment, the at-large seat on the Planning Board. For reappointment, the at-large seat on the Planning Board. Rowan Transit System Advisory Board, John Allen Hall applied for an at-large seat at Rowan Transit. Do we have a motion to approve those folks?
Bye-bye.
Right in a second.
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And Financial Report, Anna.
Right. We will start with cumulative expenditures for the month of September. We were at forty-seven point seven million, which is one point two million over FY25, or two point five eight percent higher.
So everyone knows that's not just September.
Cumulative through September, yes. So three months, or a quarter.
July, August.
Yep. So next is cumulative through September for revenues. We're at eighty-three point two million, or two point eight million over FY25, or three point five eight percent. Of course, the majority of that is, we're property taxes. People pay at the beginning to... So next is our cumulative current year property taxes. We've collected seventy-three point eight million through the month of August, or five point two million over the previous year, seven point six two percent. Cumulative sales tax, this is our June thirtieth, 2025. So we ended the year at forty-four point five million, or two point five million over last June of 2024. So this did come in higher than we had anticipated, and June was six percent over, for the year. We were six percent over the previous year. Just as a reminder, we budgeted that sales tax at forty million. And again, this year, we left it flat at forty. And then, for the month of June, it was three point nine million, or seventy-three point eight, seventy-three thousand eight hundred over the previous June, single month totals of one point nine three percent. So the gap for the month of June was not that much different from the previous.
What was the previous slide for?
The previous slide was the cumulative for the year.
This?
Of, no.
No, prior year.
Prior year, yes. The sales tax runs behind from the state, so it just takes a while to get all the numbers. Any questions? You know, just, I guess, from my perspective right now, concern would be the federal shutdown and how it's going to affect DSS and Health Department, any other federal grants that we have. So just kind of, we're still in a wait-and-see mode with that, but that would be, we're an area of concern right now.
Has DSS checked stuff?
I would have to get with Micah to completely understand, but as far as I know, they're not paying any, like, they're not reimbursing us, but they haven't said that they're not providing, like, that they're not going to reimburse.
So they are going to reimburse?
As far as I understand. There's just nothing flowing at the current time.
Mr. Craig. Good evening. With us tonight is Mike Plummer with HDR. HDR is our consultant, and it helps us with all of our activities at our landfill, and Mike has helped us out for a number of years. We've been working on acquiring new permits for our landfill. We're intrigued by that because of our intake. The state is requiring us to get new permits, but in doing so, we are wanting to increase that capacity. And we've got some areas that we could do so, so I'll turn it over to Mike then to explain what we've been working on.
Craig?
Thank you. Again, as Craig mentioned, I've been asked to come and give you an update on where we're headed with the solid waste, long-range solid waste planning community. And so I'm going to talk about the proposed expansion that we've been investigating, where we stand with initial community evaluation. Please, if you have any questions, feel free to ask. So just a quick history lesson. I'm seeing full screen here, but not up here. I apologize. I will forge ahead, but...
Can you make it full?
It is. It's right up there. Okay. As long as you guys can see it full screen, I'll work from this. Apologize again. So just a quick history lesson. So the current landfill, it's a Woodleaf, North Carolina, permitted in nineteen eighty-nine as a lined landfill. I will say that that's one of the first lined landfills in the state. Rowan County was on the cutting edge almost nine years, well, nine years in advance of the rest of the state promulgating. It was permitted as ninety-acre landfill. See on the far left, outlined in black, is, or phases one through five. And then, look, more towards the center, the picture, phases six through nine were permitted as well. And so what we're talking about expanding is the center area, between phases one through five, phases six through nine. And then on the far right, you see, very faintly, CND landfill. We're looking at expanding into that area as well. Just to go through a little bit further, in ninety acres, you're currently operating in phases one through five. Phases six through nine have not been constructed yet. The volume of waste for phases six through nine is five point six million. Overall, you have a nine capacity of fifteen million, nine million combined. That remaining nine million affords you approximately twenty-five years of additional capacity. And that's based on the current compaction that you're getting of the waste and the annual tonnage that you're taking in. One thing, and I'll get into this a bit more, but you might say, why would we be looking at expansion if we have twenty-five years of capacity left? And it has, to me, it has to do with how you develop the landfill. Right now, you've got one unit, you're going to build another unit, we're looking to permit in between sequentially. It's much easier to build it from west to east in stages. The center area is the lowest point, so think of it as water's always draining in that direction. Much easier to build a low spot, working the way you want. The other thing that I will point out here, just for reference, is the state is in, I'll say, almost a crisis terms of capacity. I think there's been estimates, ten to fifteen years of capacity across the state. You guys, yes. So the state has estimated ten to fifteen years of capacity across the state for landfill, yes. So Rowan County is in a very good position. So here you can see the expansion. See this center area, which we have, phase six now, thirty-one acre expansion. We've already done some due diligence. There's a drainage feature that ran through the middle that had a spring and stream. We've permitted the mitigation for those impacts. We are waiting to actually do the mitigation, so we get approved from the state for creating the landfill. But one of the things I'll point out is that this landfill, the expansion, maintains the same perimeter buffers. We're not getting any closer to the property lines, any closer to your neighbors. We also have maintained the same top height of the landfill. A lot of times, increasing the height can be a little bit contentious. People see it more, it has a larger view shed, so we made a conscious effort to keep it at the same elevation as the current permit. So really, it is what we call a valley fill in between. And then, development, again, on your screen, from left to right, it's a preferred mechanism for filling, just from operational perspective. It's much better, easier to construct, build. It will require the relocation of some facilities. There's a maintenance facility that's in the center that you moved outside of that area. And then, eastern expansion, I mentioned, you can see to the far right, the closed CND landfill. That was a landfill that was closed in two thousand and eight because of rule changes. It's an unlined landfill, so they went away from unlined landfill to CND. There's a lot of airspace there that we recapture if we were to expand lined landfills that we'll see that later slides. What this affords you is an additional nine point five million yards of additional capacity. So basically, expanding the life from twenty-five years to fifty, given those same criteria, tonnage, impact, pretty significant. I hope so. For your sake.
Your beard says you're already retired.
So this is kind of a color depiction. You can see the pink is phase six. We've estimated three point six million yards of capacity, five point seven for seven, four point three million for eight, and one point five for phase nine, which is over the CND, for a total of fifteen point one million. And I'll walk through these kind of quickly, just how we were talking about building, developing the landfill. You can see from west to east. And then I think this is probably what shows you where the volume really occurs. So what's shaded in green is the space in between the original permitted landfill. You can see on the left-hand side, phases one through five, which we're actively filling. In the middle, on the right-hand side, it says phases six through nine. That's the white area. And that valley fill, as you can see, is almost as large as the landfill units on either side. So that's really where you're getting a lot of capacity. And then on the far left, see that little hump? That's your CND that was closed early, and that's all the volume that we could capture if we were to maybe mine that CND, clean it up, put it in a lined landfill, slide the line of edge out. So that's the, that's the nut of what we're trying to do with the expansion. Because it's a major expansion, I say major expansion, it's greater than ten percent additional capacity. The state requires a statute that we do environmental justice, screening, port. So this is the community. We've also started a community evaluation plan, where you're looking at your site, and the way they do it is they look a mile around your site, and they compare the community makeup to both the county makeup and the state. If there's areas where, say, like poverty exceeds averages for the county, state, they want you to try to develop a community engagement plan that mitigates that to some degree. And so we did look at environmental justice using the state's websites and their guidance documents, and they found, found it. There was EJ criteria for race, gender, poverty, and disability. So we've come up with a communication plan that we will submit to the state. The state will use it on their end, and they go for their public hearing for issuing a draft permit for this. So we're going to use it for our public engagement, and that's part of the reason why we're here tonight, is to let you know and also kind of put it in the public forum that we're maybe moving in this direction. We'll use communications plan moving forward.
Do you mind explaining that to me again?
Sure.
How landfill and environmental justice is combined?
It's through a statute, so for us to get a new permit for exceeding ten percent of our original permitted capacity, we're required to do an environmental justice study. Just to make sure that we're...
The landfill's been there for thirty years.
It's a statute that calls us...
This is state, not a federal requirement? Is this a state requirement or a federal requirement?
State requirement, yes. Yeah, I think it was two years ago that they instituted that.
So this means that they're going to be going around talking to the neighbors, telling them what they've called...
Right. Yeah, we would be talking to the neighbors anyway, educating them on what we're asking for, what we're trying to do. This is the way the state has tried to give guidance on how to belt that plan, that engagement.
I live about five miles from there. Get my house.
Okay.
We don't have the meeting back.
Fair enough, fair enough.
Go ahead, for that matter.
Yeah, and part of this environmental justice review, we also look for what they call sensitive receptors. So in this case, you know, churches, neighborhoods, close proximity, beyond just the immediate neighbors, right? So communicating with them, making sure that they're aware of it, giving them an opportunity to come in here, what the expansion's about. So here you see, we've listed some project neighbors, churches, subdivisions that were, yes, were identified as potential sensitive receptors. And so, again, this would just inform us on how we communicate, who we're communicating to. You know, if we offer an open house, informational meeting, you know, again, disability was one of the triggers for EJ, so we might offer a virtual meeting for people that can't physically get to, say, the landfill or wherever we hold the open house. So really, the next steps for us are to finalize the report, submit it to the state for their review and approval, at the same time, move forward with the permit application for the expansion, submit to the state for their review and approval. And once we have the design refined, have meetings with the community, engage with the community, just to make them aware of what we're looking to do, view any concerns. If there's concerns from the community that we hear, we bring them back to you, you know, discuss what potential mitigation strategies might be. Then we would look... Then we would look for you to give us approval to submit that application for the expansion to the state.
This is on land we already own.
That's correct, yes, yeah. At the border area, also same thing. Yeah, we're not looking to go to a new site somewhere else. We're just trying to maximize the site that we. Yeah, and then once we submit the state application, then there would be a public hearing for permit drafting.
I don't know who to ask this to. So our landfill is under what is called a enterprise fund.
Enterprise.
Correct. Correct.
Enterprise fund. So for the public, that means there's no tax dollars.
That's right.
The users, whoever cleaned out your garage and taken stuff to dump, pay a fee, right? They pay us seven dollars, weigh you in, charge you. That goes into a separate checking account. So we pay for equipment, staff. We're accumulating money, a fund specifically to pay for this in time for us to open, they call a new cell.
Yes.
So this is expensive to do, not cheap.
Correct.
Very expensive to do, but we are accumulating money in that enterprise. My question is, I think I understand you saying our current facility would last twenty-five years. By opening this, it would stretch it fifty years? And that sounds great, none of us. But my my question is, we have a lot of out-of-county companies or whoever uses or uses our facility. Is that unusual? Why are they coming here? I don't, you would know, probably, I'd not be asking.
It's a concern. Him or the community. This was a private enterprise running a landfill.
So do we need their revenue?
I think it hilts, but getting looks from.
I've never analyzed it that way. I mean, we just look at the revenues that we currently have and.
It's just their operations.
But we've never, we've never analyzed the revenues from outside the county's, or first.
You'll never tell us, that'll save you.
Well, I, you know, I'd like us to think because when this, and again, this is fifty years from now, we're not. But when we have to open a new one somewhere, you talk about a public outcry. They're going to put a ninety-acre dump, we'll call it, near my house. So whoever comes behind us decades situation on their hands, especially with the growth we've got going on, is there going to be acres for us to do that? So I don't know how we do this, and we don't have to do it today. But I would like manager and finance and you guys to really begin to look at, what does that model look like? Do we need the revenue? And why are they coming here? They come in here because they didn't plan? What kind of issue does that create? Certainly, we don't want to make them good neighbors.
A.
Good neighbors. But I'd like to ask, I'd like to ask that question. Could that be stretched into seventy-five years? It is a Rowan County. What is best?
Large landfill.
Out, out of.
Yes.
But it could get, but it could get worse.
Very bad.
Do that.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. I will, I will, I think that is a very good idea. I will say this, I think one of. Here we've. I think when we started, I don't remember. But I think they were, we're at thirty years. No technology changes. Technology will change a lot between now and here. I think we've already gained twenty years and ten years. But if we're going to have the Ferris and whoever else, we're bringing their.
I'd like to be known for some other type of place. I don't know how you do that.
Thank you for that.
Did want to make sure y'all are aware of that. Me with the community. Y'all got.
Craig, do we need to do?
We can do. Yeah. Thank you.
You need to, we have the little girl at landfill, take our money. Give her a raise.
He's awesome. Yeah, I agree.
All right, Commissioners, we had scheduled a closed session after this. I'd like to make a motion that we punt closed session for the next meeting. Is that okay?
Thank you.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Pierce, I'm glad you're here today.
Yes.
Glad to have you. We missed you. And would you do the honor of?
I certainly will. I vote to extend the meeting. Now I'll vote, make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And I've got time for you.